The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education Public Work Session Meeting of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, sixteen Ellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. The state of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Move to reopen?
Move.
Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mr. Pavlak, Mrs. Kumar, seconded. Take roll. Mr. Bubba?
Here.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Fatao?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumar?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Excuse me, here.
Mr. Prasakos?
Present.
Mrs. Huddup?
Here.
And Mrs. Wintick?
Here.
All right, we're going to stand for the flag, please, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Administrative reports, Dr. Toback?
So congratulations to our new board members, Michael Fatao, Barry Prasakos, Avita Wintick, and also our new board president Suzanne Huddup, and vice president, let's get Michael Fatao. Administration looks forward to working with all of our new board members through many challenges we'll be facing in the coming weeks and months. I'll focus my reporting to start on the COVID-19 situation in our school system and across the state. After many weeks of bad news that included dramatic increases in the number of students testing positive for COVID, and the rise in quarantined students, a lack of staffing, and a host of other problems, and those report that we passed the peak, it seems, this week we experienced significant reductions in both positive cases and quarantine. So board members, earlier this evening, I believe you received a chart. So that chart, I think, represents very good news for the district because it represents dramatic decreases in the number of COVID cases. So it shows that between January twelfth and January sixth, in our last report, one hundred and ninety-seven fewer students tested positive for COVID, that's a thirty-eight percent reduction; one hundred and one fewer students are quarantined, representing a nineteen percent decrease. For the staff, in this one week, thirty-six fewer staff members have tested positive, which is a thirty-seven percent decrease, and we have twenty-five fewer staff members in quarantine, representing a seventy-eight percent reduction. So that is a huge boost for the district and an extremely helpful turn of events for us. It's encouraging news, and our numbers for this week show that we will continue this downward trend the next time we do this report. So hopefully, the worst is over. This evening, we're following along with the intent of the public work session, which is to provide the board with a significant amount of information and topics to discuss leading up to our regular meeting. Agenda is packed with important topics, including an annual discussion about the school calendar for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, and our COVID mitigation strategies. For those of you who may be following along with the news, the New Jersey Department of Health, as recently as yesterday, provided more guidance to school districts about options and possible changes that may help schools as we continue to fight against challenges created by COVID. This evening, the board and the community will be hearing from our auditor, who will present the annual school district financial audit. Keep in mind that the excellent results that you'll hear about is a culmination of many years of work by the Board of Education and the administration to strengthen the financial position of the district after a financial crisis of two thousand and eleven and the following years when the state cut millions of dollars of state aid from our school system. Ten years later, much has been done to strengthen our financial position, allowing many other vital projects to move forward. Meeting also includes a presentation about the American Rescue Plan, which is connected to our discussion about the mitigation strategies, but it's complete for different reasons. The American Rescue Plan is the Department of Ed required activity in every school district every six months and provides the community with an overview of how the district will use the seven point eight million dollars received in additional federal support. Report summarizes the different ways the funds will be used to support COVID mitigation, but does not include specific numbers for each area. Finally, Mrs. Reichman will be sharing a new program. Even though there is a pandemic, there are so many people doing so many positive things across our schools and in all the areas of our operations. This new recognition program has been well received, and this week, community members also recognized many of our employees. So special thanks to the Wayne Education Foundation, the Wayne Township Administrators -- I'm sorry, the Wayne Township Administrators Association, and some anonymous private donors who sponsor complimentary breakfasts for our employees at each of the schools. More about that from Mrs. Reichman in a few minutes. As far as the HIV report goes, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township public schools. There have been six incidents of HIV investigated since the last report, and two of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of HIV incidents. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Discussion of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school calendar. Move? Yes, Mrs. Kazan?
I just want to point out that there was some static on social media about not having Eid next year, and the reason for that is it falls on a weekend, so it wasn't necessary. I'm sure no person put that out there. For the community, didn't check their dates. So just want to make sure that it wasn't overlooked, and everyone knows that it wasn't intentionally overlooked, it just isn't necessary to have on the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three calendar.
So just some background information for the board. The calendar goes through an extensive review process. It makes its way through all of our bargaining units, so every one of the bargaining units that represent employees of the district have had the opportunity to review the calendar, and so it's for the board to discuss tonight.
Anyone else? Mr. Duffey?
Just a quick question here. Looking at November eighth, I know there's been some talk about Election Day becoming a federal holiday.
Yes.
It's a consideration if it does pass.
I can't tell you how much discussion has gone on about November eighth and all the different ways that the district may be able to look at what to do on that particular day. Right now, it's listed as an service day for staff if it becomes a full holiday where the staff members are off. There's different things we would have to look at as far as where else could we put that day for professional development, what else could be done. But we're able to adjust if need be, if that were to happen. The other issue is there is concerns about safety and security with the reduction of police officers that are available at our election day. So even though the students are not available, the staff members are, and some of them are not comfortable. So it's a little bit of a difficult situation.
Mr. Pavlak?
Well, that was going to be my next question, because it's not just November eighth, it's June sixth as well. And being that our illustrious governor and legislature can care less about our students' and school safety, except when they want to, and they can make it political, I think we should either look at taking that day off if we can have police officers there to provide security, or at least make it a minimal day, at best, because this is ridiculous, what's happening and threatening them. They don't care about the kids. They care about political statements.
So the June sixth election starts later in the day?
That's why a half-day, a minimal day would work.
So that would be something that could be considered.
Anyone else have a calendar?
This is not an emergent item, right? It's a discussion item, so that's something that we can --
Let's pull it.
Yeah. But if the board is interested in considering June sixth, if there's consensus on the board, certainly that's an adjustment we can make.
Mr. Bubba?
I think we should do something about June sixth. I think we need to close that day. We have minimal days, or not minimal days, but we have snow days that there's no guarantee that we're going to use, and we should look at if we can use something like that, then I think that makes the most sense, to not have school out there, not put anybody, not put our teachers, not put our students, not put anybody in any kind of danger for that day.
Mrs. Kazan?
Do we know how many schools are left that actually have voting locations, because we were successful in removing quite a few.
I believe it was down to five.
We got one back because the boys' club did away with --
They stopped.
They don't want us there. They don't want it either, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Duffey?
No.
No, I'm just thinking of if there's any way that we could do this, that we don't shut down every school, if not every school has polling locations, but then, of course, that would be an equity thing with regard to some being open. And I get that, that would be problematic, I was just curious how many we were down to, and if we're still trying to fight those. And I guess, is that battle over with?
I think the battle's over with only because of the lack of other --
They don't have alternatives.
So I think there was a very good faith effort made to move all the polling locations out of our schools, but at this point, I don't think there's anything else that can be done.
Mr. Fatao?
I think since it is a later election, the poll workers and machines have to be set up. If it is feasible, I think we shouldn't close in the schools that day, for safety and security of everybody. Look at it around. If not, I have to agree with Mr. Pavlak that it is a minimal day.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here's my whole issue with the elections. This board voted, not this board, but the board voted at one time to remove all the elections from the schools because it was a safety concern. And we voted on a Thursday night, Friday morning, the Attorney General's office was on the phone and said, "You can't do that." We had no problem over the last two years moving elections out of schools and not having them in schools, and finding every different way to do it. When are we going to come to the realization of the people who run the elections? People don't vote in the schools, where their kids go to. Probably one percent of this town votes in a school where their child goes to. People aren't walking to the polls. How about we make it convenient for people like we did last year, have voting open for ten days beforehand? And we have, and nobody in our school's going to vote, or we have a minimal number of people, if you look at the numbers. How about that? This is a fever problem.
I don't think --
Is early voting here to stay?
I don't think, wasn't it not available in --
No, we had voting in some schools.
No, no, the early voting.
That was that town who voted at their locations.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Toback?
In preparation for the discussion about the school calendar, knowing the board's pre-existing concerns about security on Election Day, I did reach out to the township, and they did feel that one allowable option, although it would cost a significant amount of money, would be the ability of the district to hire officers to work within the school. So there would not be the officer at the polling location, but there would be the officer working in the school. So that would only be necessary at the schools where we have polling locations, but we would hire a dedicated officer. I mean, we have our SROs, we have our CLOs, we have a variety of other people that cover the schools, so that would be an option to put someone in the school as additional supervision.
No.
Oh, Mr. Pavlak?
Excuse me. If they want to have elections in the school, we are not paying for it. Let them pay for it. Let them provide the security, all right? They have no problem ripping off money to any and every little pet peeve that they want to do. Put the money up. Put the money up. Enough. I'm done with Triton and all their crap, through this whole pandemic and everything else. They want to dictate everything, but then they never want to put anything behind it.
Thank you. Mr. Fatao?
Since, and Dr. Pavlak, I know that you reached out to the town, but the county clerk's office, like, as I say, as well the polling location, would it be feasible to reach out to the county sheriff's department, see if they could provide an officer at no cost? I mean, it's something that certainly we could do in coming weeks, is to see if there's a sheriff's department option that would cost you to the district? Yeah.
Anyone else?
They could be in the school, right?
Mr. Bubba?
The legislation that doesn't allow for police officers to be at the polling locations a hundred feet from there, so I guess, I mean, in theory, you could put an officer in the school, just not have them close to, but aren't they, I mean, I don't know whether they're voting in the schools anymore because it's been a long time, but is it in the gym for the most part?
Jonasque.
And they have separate entrances to the gym, so it's definitely work.
It's a feasible option, it does keep school in session, it does provide security. You could also do, you know, we could do a combination. You could do a partial, you know, like a minimal day, plus police officers present, at least for the first part of the day, so the poll workers get in, everybody else gets in, and that's all kind of, you know, I know that the police department contract requires a minimum of, I believe it's three hours. Three hours is the minimum, so we could definitely pull that off and have officers there full-time, including during this mission.
And it's only elementary, correct?
Only elementary.
So I kind of like that option. Minimal day, officers, extra SRO-type style, and then we're covered both ways.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Toback, discussion of revisions to policy one six four eight point one-one.
There was consensus for the changes to the calendar. I'm sorry. There's consensus for the changes to the calendar. As far as this discussion this evening, I'm not going to move forward if we're going to change it, we should decide that. Okay.
So you have essentially, you have Mr. Bubba, who at this point is, I think, he can speak for himself, but you have an idea that you'd like to advance, right?
Yeah, I would, I'm motioning that we move to a minimal day, and then SRO-style officers in those schools for the minimal day. There are three-hour minimums we have to do anyway. The elementary is minimum, I think, is less than three hours at this point in time. So I think that three-hour block covers us?
For June sixth.
For June sixth. And I think that resolves the issue without us having, plus we also cover the teachers in that respect, too.
And then we would do the same for November eighth, even though it's a professional development day, we would also bring in officers at the schools, right?
For the five, yeah, for the five schools, because it's only five schools for that.
Well, we only need the officers.
Right.
Okay. Would anyone like to second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mrs. Kazan. Those in favor?
So it's moving forward, because we're starting the voting on the calendar itself at the time, but it's moving forward in the form described by the --
With changes.
-- Mr. Bubba, with the police coverage, or the police would be part of the calendar. So actually, the changes, there would be no changes?
Well, minimal day.
Minimal day.
Minimal day, and then we'll work out the rest of it with the departments, either the county or within whatever, however we do it.
We're voting on the minimal day for six, six, and then we will work out the logistics.
Pretend you can do security without voting.
We have consensus for the change, and it'll be reflected in the agenda next meeting on the twenty.
Next meeting. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Toback, the road forward.
The road forward, okay. Well, actually, we're at the policy, right? This is the discussion about policy?
Revisions to policy. Yes, revisions to policy one six four eight point one-one.
So, members, what we did earlier this week, which we provided all of you with a summary of some of the key topics facing the district regarding the pandemic recovery, since that time, we received additional guidance from the Department of Ed on January twelfth, so I know that you received a fairly extensive summary of the different policies. In the end, if you get to the policy itself, which is probably, what we're recommending essentially at this point is, the only change would be with the appendix, right? And so the appendix really about testing and quarantine, so you could see that there's basically, there's a recommendation to move ahead with that. For members of Publix, Public, there's a lot of different topics that are out there. One of the topics was masks, masking. Earlier this week, Governor Murphy extended his executive order, so all the mitigation strategies that existed previously remain in place. The other topic was COVID testing for extracurriculars. And so the Department of Health recommended an extensive testing program for all of our athletic programs, for all of our activities, clubs, everything, twice-a-week testing, vaccinated or unvaccinated students, with a recommendation to exclude vaccinated, unvaccinated students from participation during this increase in cases. The administration recommends basically maintaining our present practices as it pertains to athletics. I know that there's a number of people who are very concerned about athletics and what would happen with athletics, but at this point, the most sensible path is to continue to follow the same rules that we've been following, which is standard mitigation procedures that are backed by the NJSA. So the other thing that is a significant difference is test out of quarantine, okay? That really became much less relevant because of the changes that just took place a few days ago. So now we are down to a five-day quarantine. And so the five-day quarantine is really what we're looking to move forward with, and we were looking to start, moving forward with that, starting on Monday of next week. So that's basically where we are with that. So following the guidance that exists for the five-day quarantine will dramatically reduce the number of students that are out of school. It's one of the biggest problems that we face as a school district, is the number of students that are out of school, especially in situations where there's quarantines and many of the students in the end do not contract COVID. We also are faced with a situation where we do have, we do have a substantial reduction in the number of students that are positive, a reduction in students that are quarantined, and so at this time, it seems like everything is moving in the right direction. I think that would be very helpful. So what we have is revisions to the appendices for Board of Ed policy sixteen forty-eight point eleven, Road Forward, COVID-19 Health and Safety. As I said, very, very little of the original appendices were changed. Hours with the new guidance that was issued today, the recommended quarantine period was revised to five days instead of ten days. So what we plan to do is, if the Board of Education is okay with moving ahead with this, we would be interested in circulating this information, notifying parents tomorrow, and then move ahead after the break. So we have Monday off the following week, and then after that, we would move ahead with these changes. So I think that would work out very well, and I think after working with the administration throughout the day, we're in a fairly good position to be able to pull off at least, maybe not everything, but most of what is possible right now.
Discussion?
I have a question.
This one?
Yeah, thank you. Does the five-day include close contact and symptoms, or is it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So everybody would get five days?
Everybody, Jonasque, and there are exceptions. There's exceptions for children who medically travel. There's exceptions for situations where it's a clear cut that people, students may or not have been wearing masks, those types of things. So there are a handful of exceptions, so it's not unilaterally true. There are situations where a ten-day quarantine would still remain in place.
Thank you. Mr. Duffey?
The date that you were anticipating this, the twenty-second of November?
It would be, it would be our upcoming Tuesday. What would that be, the eighteenth?
Yes, this coming week.
The eighteenth is Tuesday. What I was saying before is the impact of that, when it comes to the quarantine, the five-day quarantine, the reduced quarantine, that would be the twenty-third. So that would be the day that students would possibly come back on a reduced quarantine.
How would that affect students who are currently out right now quarantining under the ten-day policy?
So we have this, we have the three-day weekend. Would you want to --
Well, if they're currently quarantined, they're grandfathered under that ten-day. That was very clear today from the Department of Health, but they're all starting to come back, they're returning from their quarantine. So we'll put together something, as you indicated, so you know, but it looks like by the twenty-third, just about everybody would be back, and then we'd follow the five-day quarantine. So if they're currently in quarantine, then they would be out by the twenty-third, calculating what we had today. And that will be detailed a little bit more specifically tomorrow.
So we have, in addition to a letter to the parents, we also have a revised FAQ to get to some of the fine points that we're talking about here, in case there's some other follow-up questions. And we also have a one-page summary, a chart, that basically will help parents understand, hopefully, all these changes, and we try to keep it concise in one page.
Mr. Prasakos?
Given the stress we have providing substitutes for the district, and given what we know, you know, now with vaccination versus unvaccination and the contagiousness, would we consider revising the policy to allow any person that is interested and qualified to be a substitute in the district to test, just like the other teachers are testing, to be able to work for the upcoming week? So we looked at that issue, and I believe, so there are approximately fifty-nine substitutes that are working in the district that were unvaccinated, that have not been eligible to work in the district since that date in October, where we moved ahead with only allowing vaccinated substitutes. However, thirty-four of those substitutes had no real work history in the district. So really, the pool is twenty-five, okay? So there's about twenty-five possible people that are out there that are unvaccinated that might come back into our substitute pool. At this point, our numbers are going way down, and at the time, we did not have our testing site, okay? So that means that ultimately, in every situation, the substitute would have to go out, get a test within Wayne's parameters, and then report that test on our system. With the fact that we have our own testing location, they could come to our testing site, and administratively, it saves a lot of effort to try to track all these people. Now, the problem that it creates is if you test, and so say you are already scheduled to work, you've assigned, you've accepted various jobs, but you test positive, then all those jobs are wiped out, and you wind up having to go and find another, you have to find a sub for a sub. So that's kind of a, I mean, it happens anyway, so realistically, it would happen, it could potentially happen anyway, regardless of if someone is vaccinated or not vaccinated, based on our current variant. But the, so it would be difficult, I think, a little bit more difficult to implement, especially if you're counting on people, and it would be difficult because subs work in multiple districts. So the fact is that the subs working in multiple districts, they have to really be focused on Wayne and do the testing within our parameters. So I don't know how many people would be willing to do that. Like I said, we have that in place right now, I think, with the number of staff members that are no longer quarantined, and with some of the other things that are working in our favor right now, things seem to be improving a little bit, and that may not be something if the board would like to discuss it further, you're certainly, I mean, that's what we're here for. If any of the board members are interested in that, we can certainly have a discussion.
Can I just ask you a question?
I have a thought about a staff member. You have a staff member who has a child that tests positive, and this staff member is vaccinated, they test, they're negative. Are we requiring them to stay out as well, just somebody in the household?
So if they're vaccinated, the answer is no. If you're vaccinated, that's --
Two different ballgames.
Yep, two different ballgames.
Thank you.
Okay.
One more question, sir. How often are we planning on revising? Is it as needed basis we're planning on revising this Road Forward, or are we putting a timeline?
So the Road Forward is, that's a different doctrine, okay? So this policy is the Board of Ed policy, and that's kind of the nitty-gritty of what we do from day to day. Road Forward is more of a compliance issue with the Department of Ed and the federal government, and it's basically parameters about how you're going to spend additional funding that we've received. That's really what that's about. So while it does reflect what our practices are, it's really done for a different purpose. And so that's an every-six-months thing, that's required, the Road Forward, or I'm sorry, the American Rescue, right? That's an every-six-months thing. This, if you followed along with the board meetings last year, there was a number of different phases of reopening. And so the idea is that once there is substantial guidance, like right now, we're at a moment where there's a lot of new guidance that came out that would warrant the board considering maybe some changes, maybe some different options. We've done that, like I said, since the beginning of the pandemic, but if the board wanted, I mean, we kind of, on a daily basis, there's really not much we talk about other than the pandemic and our response to the pandemic. So it's pretty focused every day, so if there are changes, if there's something new that comes our way, some things would require the board to take action, other things, maybe not so much. So, I mean, it's up to the board. So, I mean, it's up to the board if you'd like to have a weekly. And I also basically provide the board with updates every time we have a meeting. Or at least once a month, you get, maybe not every meeting, you don't talk about it all the time. But sometimes I give you an update when things that are significant are happening, whether the case numbers are increasing, we're having problems with staffing, or things like that.
All right. The next part is our school district audit presentation for fiscal year 2021. Thank you. I'm going to stand up and maybe you can see me.
Hello, everyone, board members. Hope you all have a wonderful 2022. It's going to be better, it's going to be a better year. It's very interesting here what you go through on a weekly daily basis. Really, a lot of news for that.
Now again, I have prepared some financial highlights, which I do this year. And if anyone has any questions, please, you know, interrupt me or ask me at any point in time. So again, the district's caper is 175 cases of information. And Mrs. Kazan here finds it very, very interesting. I like that. I try to cut it down and let each board member have really the clippings of what are the important numbers in the report. So I first show you the balances, fund balances of the district in '20 and '21. And as you can see, there's a $7,000, or $7 million, forgive me, $7 million increase from year to year. But as you have just been talking in the meeting today, the world has changed so much in the last almost two years. And in '20, you were affected by COVID for four months. In '21, you were affected for the whole year. And our term audit, close to 90 school districts, and it's across the board, that so many things fell off the wheels and a lot of expenditures didn't happen in 2021. And that's how you achieve savings and you had an increase in fund balance. As you can see, there's a net increase in the capital reserve establishment of maintenance reserve. You see that decrease in excess surplus. That's a result of NJDOE passing legislation to increase the unassigned portion of the district's fund balance. When that legislation came out, they said districts may retain up to 4% of their fund balances unassigned. And so we were like, okay, business as usual. We always encourage districts to keep some consistency, to know where you're going to land on an annual basis, and make sure that you're planning for your capital needs, your maintenance needs, and your budgetary needs. So, you know, the audit program comes out late. It was sometime in August. And when it did, the excess surplus calculation that's in the small report called the Auditor's Management Report dictated that we put in 4% of the calculation. And then when you work through the mathematics, some of my partners have been completing audits. And so when the calculation came out, we got on the phone with county VAs and DOE saying, this isn't working. Some districts need to have a certain amount of excess surplus. If you have excess surplus, you can't put the money in reserves. And they couldn't understand what we were talking about. And we were like, well, if you were auditing a district and you were going through the flow of the numbers, you would find the problem. So happy to report in Wayne that we're not showing excess surplus this year, but you will see that the unassigned fund balance went from 4.2 million to 7 million. And that's an increase of $2,792. So that is where the district will appropriate funds for the '22, '23 budget. Down at the bottom of the page, that's what you use to support your budget each year. In 2021, you used $1,750,000. In '21, '22, you used $1,750,000. And then in 2023, I put the note that I don't prepare the budget, and we don't have you yet. But the idea would be to keep that somewhere around $1,750,000. So the only difference is it was always reported as excess surplus. This year, it's not excess surplus, it's coming from unassigned fund balance. That rule is in effect for June of '22 as well. And the assumption is that after June of '22, it's going to revert back to 2%. So we're staying with you to make sure that there's clear communication and that there aren't any problems going into 2023. Another thing that occurred during the year is that the district was required to implement GASV 84, that was fiduciary funds. So in the past, student activity funds, payroll agency, unemployment funds, flexible spending benefits were all reported in the back of the audit in a section called H. All those were integrated into the front. So student activities and scholarships are now incorporated in the special revenue fund, which is not in these numbers that I'm reflecting to you. So there's state and federal grants that are in your special revenue fund. And now student activities show up as one column, scholarships show up as one column. And the general fund, which is reported in these highlights, the payroll agency balance, if there was one at June, is reported as payroll deductions payable. And the balance in the unemployment account, you'll see that in this breakdown of fund balance from '20 and '21. Again, when you're reporting on a GAAP basis, everything has to be comparable. So the balance at June of '21 for unemployment was 389. The year before, it was 381. We have to restate it just for that. And then I show you, give you a first idea of how that $7 million increase was generated. Little bit in revenues, and you're going to see that big number in state revenue, required each year to report the amounts that the state pays for TPAF, FICA, and pensions on behalf of the district. That's 30 million. So when you look at the caper, if you weren't paying close attention or didn't know the rules, you would think that the state gave you $32 million more than you had budgeted. You need to reflect it that way. But then on the same path, those expenditures are not budgeted either. So when you look at the expenditures, it looks like it's over expended, and it's really not. So I adjust them out with $2 million of excess revenue, state revenue, in the middle of the page. That is the unbudgeted extraordinary and non-public transportation aid. And it is included in the unassigned fund balance of 7 million up above. And for clarification, if any of this is clear, in the management report, it has the excess surplus calculation. And for the district, towards the back, you adjust these expenditures for those on-back payments. So the 4% of unassigned fund balance is 6.4 million. The 2% would have been 3.2. The allowable adjustments are the unbudgeted extraordinary aid. And that gets you a total of 8.438. But because the district deposited money in the capital and maintenance reserves, you only had $7 million of excess, of unassigned surplus at the end of the year. And so some districts have said to me, you know, are we allowed to be below the 4%? Well, the 4% also has the extraordinary aid added to it, so it kind of becomes a great thing. But the district is financially strong. You're, you were able to, pardon me, do this, but I'll give you my hope for Bill. Thank you. I'll move over to the next page where I show you what was deposited into the capital reserve account for the year. So $2.8 million went in, some interest was earned. When those projects are done, if they're not set and full, the balances come back in. So $38,000 came in from unexpended capital outlay projects. And there was a budgeted withdrawal of $1 million during the year, which left you with $8.681 million. And then I went and looked ahead and said in the current year that you're in '21, '22, there was a $1.2 million withdrawal. So it just gives you a perspective. I don't know of any other actions we're taking with regard to capital reserves, but those are the things that I know. And then on the first page, you see that the district established a maintenance reserve with a $3.8 million deposit. And I think that's really good because trying to keep your expenditures within a 2% spending cap, you have to accommodate any capital need. I am a big proponent of when you achieve savings and you have money left over at the end of the year, put it in capital reserve, put it in maintenance reserve, because that's the only avenue you have when unexpected spending stick and expensive expenditure. Next section is capital projects fund, that's Fund 30. You have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 active projects. These were the unextended balances on those projects at the end of the year. And then we get to the food service fund. I remember when this pandemic hit, I'll never forget that Friday in March. That's when it started for me. I was with some school district VAs, and the very first concern was how to feed the kids. How to feed the kids, how to feed the kids. So again, knowing that you were only affected by the pandemic for four months in '20 and the whole year in '21, you can see that the revenue of going through the cafeteria line is pretty much nonexistent. It's now 1.57 million. The expenditures decreased by 835,000. Subsidies came in, an increase of 740,000. And then the food service management company contribution. You have the contract, and then the administration and the board negotiated with them. And so Cheryl told me in today that you're going to see $100,020 and $150,021, but really $125,000 give back.
Just real quick, in the contract, you have a guarantee, which we put out on our, in our F P, and it requires them to, if they don't hit a certain benchmark amount of money for the district, then they have to pay us a certain amount. And that's what we negotiated for two years.
That'll change with the situation, right? And then as a result of COVID, the board contribution in 2020 was 44, almost 45,000. And in '21, it was 92. So we went a step further, talking to Cheryl today, and she told me that the subsidies are really coming in. And perhaps, or definitely, you won't need a board contribution. So that is good. And then at the end of the year, because we have to contribute from the board, the balance at the end, the unrestricted balance is zero. And then the district has $261,000 to cash out. The extended day program, again, you'll see that the revenue was down 545, the expenditures were down 538,000. And then because there are salaries charged to this program that represent TPAF employees, part of all the pension information has to be allocated to this fund. Kind of distorts life as we know it. So part of the deferred inflows and outflows and pension liability are allocated to this fund. So it's very difficult for the board to understand why are we $722,000 short in this fund? In reality, we're not. Wraparound program, again, just to demonstrate that, you know, the revenue is down, the expenditures are down, and then the unrestricted net position is pretty level at $36,000, not meant to be making a ton of money. And then you'll see the long-term liabilities of the district, the serial bonds that are outstanding, the premiums on those bonds, net pension liability. It's been decreasing almost every year for the last four years. Capital leases. You had some new leases. You have usually five-year payments to pay them off, so $13 million at the end of the year. And then the compensated absences are the unused second vacation time of the employees at the end of the year. And then, as I said, the extended day program, part of the pension liability is allocated to that. And there are some compensated absences associated with that. Very few overall long-term liabilities. And then we get to the last page. Very huge district, you have a lot going on. You receive a lot of federal funds, you receive a lot of state funds. I'd like to remind board members and new board members that it's a financial statement audit, but on top of that, it's also a compliance audit with NJDOE regulations. So on top of that, whenever you spend $750,000 in a year, these individual federal grants have compliance requirements to them, and they have to be audited. And we have to make a determination each year, we have to evaluate risks. So if there's a new program, such as these COVID grants, and you didn't spend a lot of the COVID grants this past year, so we didn't have to look at those. But we have to rotate programs. You can't look at the same program year after year after year. If you haven't looked at a program in two years, it's selected the following year. So this year, we did the food service program as the federal program. And with all of that, I can't demonstrate what that means to say the recommendations are none. We have been here. We have been here, warriors, for a relatively short time. And you've worked with several people here. And the commitment is unbelievable, the cooperation, the concern, the care, everything. It's just an absolute joy to work for you and work with your administration. So no audit recommendations really is amazing. And then my firm likes to come up with something eye-catching to say, hey, board members, you know, you should keep a few things in mind. So it seems like the last five years, constantly new government accounting standards, board pronouncements coming out that we have to implement. So for the '21, '22 year, it's going to be GASV 87 leases. Don't know a lot about it. My staff is now finding out about it. And my understanding at this point is a lot of calculations have to be made. I think they're taking something that's not complicating and complicated and making it very complicated.
What?
So we will definitely keep your financial people in the loop with that. Also, again, talking about the COVID grants, there are so many of them. And we know that even with Title I, which is the normal customary grant, when that's selected for monitoring, and again, Wayne is an exemplary school district. I'm not joking about that. When they come in and look at Title I with their magnifying glass, they would come back with a page or two of findings and recommendations, like, how can you do that? These are people who really care about what they're doing. So we're afraid that with these COVID-19 grants, again, at the end of the day, they're going to be very scrutinizing. So your people are going out to meetings concerning them and what they're going to want to see. We're doing the same, and we're commiserating with each other to make sure that your finance department is dotting every i, crossing every t, and making sure that none of those funds will ever have to be returned and that you have all the documentation. And then the third comment was about second vacation time. I'm not sure how it relates to a school district. And I'll look at Mr. Decker, who are here. It's really a labor issue, but we did find that a lot of towns, I guess it was about a year ago, kept hitting the newspaper that different municipalities were using second vacation payments to employ, and they were violating federal law. We just say it might be worthwhile just to reach out to labor attorney and say, you know, is there anything that we're doing that's not following the current law?
So I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay, so I'm looking over the capital and maintenance, and then our other side. Can we, I see that this 1975 is going back to the taxpayer. Can we put some of that also into the upcoming year's capital and maintenance of the $7 million? Because I know several years ago, when you started, one of your recommendations was we were pretty low on our reserves. And we've done a good job of building those up, and we're going to need them with the influx of potential new students coming down the pike, because we have buildings to bring up to snuff, to make room for them. So I just want to know what you recommend with that.
It definitely can. So when Bill's putting the budget together in February, together with the superintendent, they will look at those needs. And so the $1,975,000 is what you've always used as revenue to offset operations. You can definitely budget an increase in capital reserve.
Or maintenance.
Yep.
So there's no restriction there, it's about $7 million. Okay, thank you.
And I know we've had several discussions about what projects are in capital outlay and, you know, lots of communication. And I think that's what really makes everything move along well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Mr. Padma?
Question. We're about to start going into our budget process. Recommendations where you think we should be looking at our budget of any place? Other than reducing what we're giving back to the, what we have to generate to give back to the taxpayer?
Okay, so I am removed from the budget process.
Right.
Occasionally, I am consulted for the high-end theoretical rationale. My, again, another one of my opinions is that you're allowed to increase spending up to two percent, and I recommend that the board take advantage of that. And again, repeating that trying to manage your capital and your maintenance costs in that two percent cap is very difficult. So I think it's mindful to do that. I'm not aware if the district has a cap bank?
Oh, not the cap bank.
If you had a cap bank, that would mean you didn't go up to the top in the past and that you could bank it for two or three years. I also recommend doing that. I don't know the condition of the school facilities and what the big ticket projects are. Just know that there's constantly projects going on and that's pretty much the recommendation. And then, of course, I always recommend keeping this number that you used to offset consistent. I did have a district that surprised me. We do the audit in the fall, and then the budget's done in February, and we went in in June or July to do the audit, and they typically use one point eight million dollars of surplus. And I discovered that they used an additional one point four million, and I became alarmed. And I said, okay, please tell me that this is not recurring operating cost, because I don't know how you're going to generate three point two every year. And so they have the cap bank and they need to hone things in.
Mr. Versat?
Yeah, I have a timing question. So the audit was delivered in December this year. Is that when we're typically delivering it, or did you have, did you experience any delays to COVID?
We did not experience delays to COVID. We did not experience any delays because of the district, and it's that. We do experience some delay in regard to getting information from the Department of Eds. So for instance, the audit program itself doesn't come out until late August. And then I'm not really certain when the pension information came out. That's just for pension, that's Gatsby sixty-eight, but the Gatsby seventy-five information still has not come out. They're expecting it every month, they say, by the end of the month, by the end of the month, by the end of the month. And so we have determined that that is not material to the district's financial statements, and we are not waiting for that information. We did not have to qualify your opinion because of it, because we felt it was not material. And so I did go to one school district who said, and I went to that district in the middle of December, our audit is late. And I'm like, but it isn't late. I'm like, your audit is one of the only audits that's been filed so far this year. It frustrates us, we really, the deadline used to be December fifth, and it's impossible to get to December fifth, and you want to get back to December fifth. So again, I think they delayed the odd sum, was that just January sixth?
Fourth.
January fourth. So right after the new year, they wanted, all this information from the odd sum, and it's in sync with the audit. So to us, not issue the audit and do it at the same time is dangerous, because things could be different, wrong.
Yeah, one sum is the electronic copy that we submit to the Department of Education, that is a summary of the financial report.
And then it goes into this budget software, and it posts it and information forward. So that's why the state wants it in by January fourth, or blow it into the budget software. There's a lot of us in there. But I am happy that your report is done, and it's good, and it's a good opinion.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Moffett.
I stand on a lot of shoulders, right?
Yes, your whole department. Go team.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Toback, a minute, he'll come back and talk about the American Rescue Plan update. Thank you. I'm sorry, I misspoke. Freyshman's going to go through the American Rescue Plan.
It's okay. Good evening, everybody. This will be a real, very quick summary. Dr. Toback already shared most of the information. But as he communicated earlier, every six months, we are required to provide an update. And this really just details, reflects any changes in guidance, how we're addressing that in the school, and it's all tied into the American Rescue Plan grant. So this just reinforces what I just said, I'm sorry, our requirement every six months, which is why I'm here tonight. Is that the first one? You know what? And we have to re-click for me, because I'm going to form two slides. That one says, go back to A B. Go back again. Okay, thank you. This first slide, this is broken out in sections. So the first couple of slides are all about maintaining health and safety, section A. And this is basically taken directly from the template that we submit, which is tied to the grant. On January eleventh, Dr. Toback shared earlier, the governor reinstated public health emergency by issuing executive orders two eighty and two eighty-one, which continue executive orders two fifty-one and two fifty-three, which is the existing masking and staff vaccination requirements in schools. So this will just continue as we have done before, and the mitigation strategy is tied to that. We're required to just have signs around the school and reinforce in the schools the proper wearing of masks. As far as physical distancing, this has been updated. You probably recall that at one point we were six feet apart. It's been reduced to three feet to the greatest extent possible. Our schools are heavily populated. If you recall, last year, we had cohorts, we have all of our students in school. So it's not always three feet. We do our best, and then we have other mitigation strategies in place to support the fact that they're not always three feet apart. So the next slide. Handwashing is taught and reinforced, especially with the little ones. There's soap in all the classrooms, and we have hand sanitizers that have at least sixty percent alcohol available for students and staff. And as far as cleaning and maintaining our facilities, we have, just in the past few weeks, really just enhanced our cleaning protocols. We've been, you know, trying to maintain that, but we have been short-staffed, and it has been prioritized, which is taking additional time, and we've committed ourselves to that. Go to the next slide. As far as contact tracing goes, we always follow, the district follows the New Jersey Department of Health guidance for identifying close contacts. The information's gathered from multiple sources. And tomorrow, we will be putting out a letter and an updated FAQ that details the January twelfth quarantine and isolation guidance and guidelines. So this will very specifically detail this information for parents and community members so that they understand what is now required. Quarantine requirements were reduced to five days, and that will be explained. Go to the next slide. This slide basically just shares that during levels of community transmission, we work with the Department of Health to identify testing options for students. We have an onsite testing center that was available for our staff, and now this has been extended to use for families for our students. And we have partnered with the Wayne Township to offer and just shared information about the local vaccination clinics and, you know, supported people with securing times for staff and families as it was requested. Go to the next slide. Maintaining health and safety, we continue, this is the last section, yes. And this is basically just detailing the accommodations that we have in place. There are staff members, students who may not be able to wear masks. There may be suggested or practices we have in place for mitigation, and we have accommodations for them. And so each is addressed on an individual basis to maintain the safest environment possible. Go to the next slide. Ensuring continuity of services, you know, a big point of concern as a result of the pandemic is any unfinished learning, students falling behind. We have committed ourselves to training all of our administrators and instructional staff members in a tiered intervention system. We have remediation, small group instruction, differentiated practices, which have been enhanced and are reinforced and used in the classrooms on a daily basis. Beginning in February, at each elementary school, we'll be offering an intervention program outside of the school day. And this was, this is available for students who are identified using available data. It will be cut by our district teachers, and these programs were customized to address math and language arts standards that may have not been met, grade level standards, so that they can target and just practice and reinforce these standards outside of the school day. They'll run anywhere between three or six weeks, two to four hours per week. And that information will be communicated to students who meet the eligibility criteria. We do have programs during the school day for all students, and that was what I just said. Everything is differentiated, and we have our basic skills programs, our reading support, special education services. Everything was looked at under a very tight lens to make sure that we consider and address learning loss or skills that may have not been met during the pandemic due to less time in school. Go to the next slide. And here, this basically just, it's a part that says, we provide an opportunity to share this information out with all of you tonight, and if there is anyone from the community who would like to comment or express any input or feedback, you have that opportunity tonight to do that. Any questions from the board? Okay, so this concludes the American Rescue Plan presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Freyshman.
You're welcome. And I think we go right into our next presentation.
Yes. Terrific. Thank you.
You want to pull the next presentation? The present positive? Present the positive, this one? Oh, you don't have it? Do you need me to log in?
You're the only one who sent me this one.
Why don't I log in? Want me to log in?
Yes, you're the only one who sent me.
Okay, you'll log out, and I'll log in. Or actually, just open another tab, I can log in completely.
Yeah, but I'm logging on the machine of a man, that's the same issue.
Open up a private tab. That'll do it.
Yeah, if you open another tab.
No, just a private, you have to go private window.
Oh, incognito down at the bottom? So under, I think, the four, go to just incognito.
Go to the top right-hand corner.
Go to the top right-hand corner, the three dots.
Click there, and now go new incognito. Then Donna should be able to log in from there. It's her cell.
This mouse is, uh...
Go to Microsoft Google, Google Ads, for the presentation.
Oh, I just get it to email, you can...
No, go to...
Google Ads?
Yeah, Google Ads, go to Google Ads for Microsoft, sorry.
This mouse is, yeah, I can't, I can't.
The presentation is well worth the wait, I tell you.
You promise.
I do. This is turned up. Am I in the characters?
I can't see. I'll go back this tomorrow.
Was it on the table?
It's just slow.
D? I can't see.
The D?
Yep, did the R go in?
Yeah.
Okay. Am I in the second one?
Yeah.
That's very clever. I thought, I saw what I was doing. Encanto? Yeah. It's just loading? That's one, thank God, I don't know.
My son has watched that movie.
I don't know if there is a copy.
It's too important to hold a paper.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Are you still logging in? If so, does it matter? Actually, I can just run it my office and share it with you.
Should you carry show? There you go. Three one rocks. How will, I got to carry. Read the agenda.
Oh, yes.
You need a couple minutes, because I'll just read.
I'm ready. It's going, yeah. Okay, it's going to load right now. All right, team, let's go to present. Sorry about that. For our new board members or everyone that's familiar with the community, we've been trying to instill a practice where we reflect on all of the positive things, because there is so much that happens every day in our schools that we really need to celebrate. And it's a time where our staff has really been working so hard. These past few weeks have been especially hard. The weather was a challenge, we had a lot of snow, and we also had a blizzard of COVID and had many people wearing many hats at all times. So it was super important that we took a little extra time tonight to thank everyone because it's, I think a lot of people are very fatigued, grateful that we are in school, but it's taken its toll. We could go to the next slide. So tonight, I wanted to just start by, go back one, go back to the first one. Our health, our healthcare heroes. All of our nurses have been doing a tremendous job. Their job has changed significantly, because in addition to everything that they do to take care of all of our students who go down on a daily basis, they are really, have been the point person in every building to go through all this information every day, communicate it out, get in touch with parents, get in touch with teachers, and maintain the quarantine status, who is infected, who is quarantined, who's coming back. It's a lot of work. But it starts here every day, very early in the day with Maggie Landowski, our supervisor of nurses. It doesn't end, Dr. Toback, what time did you say it ends? About eleven o'clock every night. We're in communication after hours, because we have to start the next space shift. And that's tied into updating the guidance and then making sense of how that fits in with where we're at here. So it's super important that we applaud and recognize Maggie, because we would not be able to do this without her, and she has been working tirelessly and has been a tremendous force in our district, so we're grateful. Go to the next slide. We're also grateful for all of our nurses, because they are working tirelessly in our buildings. I'll start by recognizing our elementary staff, Ms. Trigg. I'll start by recognizing our elementary staff, Ms. Trignano, Ms. Silva, Ms. Kuchar, Ms. Paragallo, Ms. Tengual, Ms. Gutierrez, Ms. Bolna, Ms. DePietres, Ms. Ventorelli, and Ms. Kelly. These are elementary nurses, all doing a fabulous job. We're very fortunate to have them. The next slide. There are our middle school nurses, Ms. Lester and Ms. Meyer, Ms. Asiguez, Ms. Boyd, Ms. Napolitano, and Ms. Par. And onto our high school nurses. We have Ms. Daley, Ms. Gomez, Ms. Deutsch, Ms. Penziri. And we have substitute nurses, Ms. Cleo, Ms. C., and Ms. Seuss. So a super, super thank you and a shout out to all of them for the wonderful job that they've been doing. You can go to the next slide. Through our social media channels, we have been sending out, that present the positive form, asking for submissions. And there are way too many to share out tonight, which is a great thing because when we shared out the form this week, by the time I got into work the next day, there were pages and pages and pages lighting up, which was so nice because so many of you took time to write and share how you were feeling about our staff. So we have two special edition newsletters coming up because we want to make sure that you get to hear all these things. But I just pulled out a few tonight to share because I thought they were fun and it was an important night to celebrate. So let's just start. This parent wrote in and said, I would love to highlight all the district school nursing staff. As both an educator and a parent in the district, the school nurses, pre-K, elementary, middle, and high school, have gone above and beyond. Most importantly, they're working closely with the parent community through this COVID-19 pandemic. They're going above and beyond to ensure that the internal and external communities have the tools and resources they need and health and education. They have all been remarkable and should be commended for their dedication and outstanding efforts. Another parent wrote in and said, all nursing staffs, Preakness, ECC, all nine elementary schools, all three middle schools, all two high schools, and the covering nurses who are part-time. So the next slide. We are so appreciative of Nurse Connie Ventorelli at Ryerson. She's so supportive and caring for our son and we can't thank you enough. These have been difficult times and you always go the extra mile to check in on him. It's heartwarming to know he's so cared for. Another parent shared, my daughter has type one diabetes and is often... Oh, am I in the wrong?
That was in the previous.
Oh, okay. I can...
That's okay.
It's always about good listeners. My daughter has type one diabetes and is often in the office with lows or highs. Nurse Power Lester at Anthony Wayne Middle School goes beyond and above to make my daughter feel comforted and okay. As a parent, I feel confident in her care and love, her kind approach. I'm sure she's dealing with COVID in the school and regular issues, but doesn't falter. She deserves mega recognition of being kind, reliable, and loving for all our children. Thank you. Okay, so now's the next slide. Julia Kelly is a school nurse at Tunis Dye. She does an amazing job juggling traditional responsibilities like administering medications, intending to cuts and bruises, as well as dealing with COVID-related issues. You can always count on Ms. Kelly to make you laugh and lend a helping hand. Sharon Kuchar is a nurse for James Fallon. Handling a million kids in a pandemic like a pro, I can't imagine how she's handling all of this, but gold star, 10 points, high five, and everything else for her. Thank you Sharon for keeping an eye out on our kids when we cannot. Nurse Judy Daley at Wayne Hills High School got back to me about my son's positive COVID test after hours. I had no doubt she was inundated with COVID cases after the holidays and I appreciated her working well past normal school hours and into the evening to return my email and answer my questions. Thank you. At EPT, Nurse Lisa Silva has not only taken on the extraordinary task of COVID responsibilities, but she has maintained, remained a constant go-for-all-students various ailments which often consist of reassurance and acknowledging everything will be okay. My second grader is a frequent visitor of Nurse Silva, but she always validates her reported ailment, which allows my daughter to return to class knowing she felt heard. That reassurance is just sometimes what our kids need. Clot on with their routine. I'm so grateful for Nurse Silva. Next slide, motivating teachers. Ms. Michelle Ableshey, kindergarten teacher at EPT. This was submitted by a parent from her class. My five-year-old joined kindergarten this year and just like every parent, I was very nervous in the start. Ms. Ableshey's attention and care made him fall in love with EPT and learning in no time. Now comes home and wants to talk about the school the whole day. At EPT School, I can say we're really happy with our son, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, this is another one for her. We're really happy with our son's kindergarten teacher. She's very attentive to students. Our son is super excited to go to school every day and misses his classroom on the weekends. His teacher approach to learning and showing the world is extremely important for a little learner. Mr. Schell, the history teacher at Wayne Hill. Mr. Schell has been a teacher in the district for decades. Mr. Schell teaches our AP and our ELL students. Mr. Schell consistently goes the extra mile for students, his colleagues, and our social studies program. Recently, when some of our ELL students needed to go virtually, he reached out to each one to make sure they knew how to access learning and let the counselors and colleagues know that they needed extra assistance. Additionally, when a new LTR was joining our staff, that's a long-term replacement, Mr. Schell took the initiative and reached out at night on his own time to answer questions and make our new LTR member feel welcome. Mr. Schell does all this while coaching, being an educational leader in the building, and recently taking two additional class periods, a seventh period assignment, in order to make sure our kids had quality education until we had a full-time teacher in the room. Mr. Schell consistently gives of himself to helping kids and colleagues at health. Next page. Principals that put the P in positive. Mr. Ethan Mayen, Fallon Elementary School. Mr. Mayen's a principal that goes above and beyond. He consistently supports staff and students. His dedication has a positive impact on James Fallon School's learning environment. His school spirit is clearly seen and felt. He makes it a point to share in student successes, has lunch with his students on their birthday, and is a proponent of physical activity wherever possible. His open dialogue with parents, commitment to educational success, and creativity set him apart. School culture and positivity start from elimination down. The guiding beliefs and values he possesses are evident in the way the school operates. Mr. Dave Almbach, principal of Anthony Wayne Middle School. This was submitted by a staff member. EW is so lucky to have Dave. For years during our ugly sweater holiday fashion day, his wife buys him, yes, his wife an ugly sweater. He will then pass it on at our staff meeting in January. What a way to make people laugh and smile every year. Although this is just the tip of the iceberg for what Dave does for his EW family. Your awesome, Dave. Next slide. These two people have really kept us running these past few weeks. Mr. Peter Romaine is our new director of facilities. Thank you to the facilities department for all they do. The snow and ice have been removed by the time I drop my children off at each building. I'm reassured knowing all the precautions and cleaning that is taking place due to COVID-19 to keep our schools, students, and teachers safe. And this was submitted from Mr. Skavitsky, director of transportation. I just want to express my appreciation for Mr. Skavitsky and his commitment to keeping our Wayne School's transportation running during a time when we have limited staff. Each day presents new challenges and he remains committed to doing whatever it takes to safely transport our students to school. His attention to the weather and snow removal should also be commended. This is a round-the-clock responsibility and Mr. Skavitsky is always on top of it. Ms. Francesca Russo is a school counselor at Randall Carter. She is being recognized for always going above and beyond for her students, staff, and her school community, like her fellow exceptional counseling colleagues throughout Wayne. Ms. Russo exemplifies how caring, dedicated, professional, can make a profound difference each and every day from helping students through grief and loss, assisting teachers in developing academic and behavioral strategies to help students in need, to providing a safe space for families to ask for assistance when they're not sure where to turn to. Ms. Russo does it all. There are countless students and their families who have experienced significantly improved confidence, self-esteem, academic and mental health outcomes. Through her work and her passion, she's at her best when others need her most. There's no off switch for Ms. Russo. She's always thinking about how to help our students and staff. She deserves to be recognized not only for the professional work she does on a daily basis, but also for who she is as a person and her student center's caring approach to every case. And we have down here Ms. Jennifer Nemitz. She is our manager of data accountability and communications. She works at the board office. She is in charge of sending out all the different districts' information to the community. Jen works all hours of the day and night to make sure all information goes to the public in a timely manner. I've known her for many years and she's a perfect example of a person that should be recognized for her hard work. It was awesome that the district sent out the 90-minute delayed graphic. I can never remember what a delayed opening meant, especially with the kids in different schools. I hope they send this out whenever there is a delay. So just to share, that was an authentic message that was pulled off social media. It's really nice to, especially for staff members, to hear and see what community members have to say about them. Again, you can look out for our next two special editions of the newsletter. We have lots to share and we encourage you to continue to commend our staff members and share your thoughts because it means a lot to them. Thank you.
Is this presentation going to be...
It'll be online tomorrow and they'll know because it's non-streamed tonight. So yeah, we told them to look. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moffett, will you proceed with the revisions to the agenda items, please?
We have a few tonight. Under emergent, human resources will be adding P12, approval termination. Recommended action reads as follows. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the termination of employee ID number 8777, effective January 22, 2022, for just cause. Under U emergent policy, we will be revising the approval policy 1648.11, the road forward COVID, health and safety, revisory just adding a sentence to appendix A, vaccination. And that additional sentence reads, per diem substitutes shall be required to submit proof of vaccination in order to be able to work after October 18, 2021. And moving on to X in their school resource table, we're adding two items. The first, number one, X1, is approved, approval of settlement agreement. And the recommended action reads as follows. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves the settlement agreement and release in the matter of student ID number 6208277676, docket number EDS05105-2021, and agency relief number 2021-32807, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the board president and secretary to, excuse me, execute same on behalf of the board. The business administrator and superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement, further implement same. We are also adding X2, which is another approval of settlement agreement. Recommended action reads as follows. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves a settlement agreement and release in matter of student ID number 2445198596, docket number EDS09846-21, agency reference number 2022-33547, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the board president and secretary to execute same on behalf of the board. The business administrator and superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same. And that concludes the revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. We will be opening to the public for, to speak on agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda topics only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under old business. Do I have a mover?
I'm the...
I'm sorry. Mr. Bubba, Mrs. Kumar.
Madam President, senior will rise and propose...
No, second. Mr. Pavlak?
Yeah.
Mr. Bubba?
Oh, wait.
Sorry. I couldn't hear if I was able to come up here. Hi, my name is Nicole Carline. I live on Pereira Avenue. I have two sons that attend Pacanac Elementary School. I currently have one son that is actually in 10-day quarantine right now, considered a close contact. Appreciate that, you know, we're moving to the five-day quarantine. I think that's, that's a great move. I am going to request, and I'm not sure if this is a policy that is just enabled at Pacanac Elementary School or if this is a policy across the district, but when a child is considered, or when they're going into quarantine, a teacher has 48 hours to do livestream and virtual. And so when I received the call on Sunday that my child was considered a close contact, on Monday, and you know, the nurse informed me that they were going to be able to get live instruction, right, for the time that he's out, on Monday, unfortunately, when he joined his Google Classroom meeting, he wasn't able to get on. And the teacher had messaged me that he's not going to be able to do live streaming until Tuesday. So I was taken back. I'm a working parent and obviously I had to become the teacher that day. I ask that you take this into consideration, especially if there is a five-day reduction. I think all of us now are very used to working in a virtual environment, working remotely. I know the teachers, I, you know, God bless them. I know their jobs are tough during this time, but the children are really missing out on that experience, especially if they're not getting the live instruction on the day that, you know, they're starting their quarantine. So I'm just asking, you know, to please either, you know, have a discussion, maybe you can look into changing that policy, working with the schools to changing that policy so that they can get a proper education. Thank you.
Seeing no one, Madam President, move to close. Thank you. Action on agenda items?
Madam President, a motion that we move all the agenda items on consent, please. Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Mr. Pavlak? Roll call, Mr. Moffett. Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes, with the exception of recusal on X2, student CT.
Mrs. Kumar? Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mr. Prusakos?
Yes.
Mrs. Winton?
Yes, with the exception that I'd like to abstain on J and U.
J and noted. Mr. Fataal?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bubba?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next session of public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Mover?
I'm the...
Mrs. Kumar?
Mr. Fataal?
Madam President, senior will rise and move to close.
Thank you, Carla.
Hi, my name is Robyn Duane, 36, Lawrence Road. I would like to know what is the rationale for only testing unvaccinated teachers? This virus has clearly shown that it does not discriminate between those who are unvaccinated and those who are vaccinated. Your policy, however, does discriminate. As a reminder, we must ask, why are we pushing boosters so hard? Because the original vaccine doses are not effective. Because the original vaccine doses are not effective. As we have clearly seen over the course of the last year, vaccinated individuals still get COVID. They still spread COVID. And as demonstrated by the Omicron variant, vaccinated individuals are testing positive at a rate higher than unvaccinated. Your policy... Oh, excuse me, one second. I lost my place here. So again, I ask, where is the rationale for only testing unvaccinated teachers other than it's used as a punitive measure?
Seeing no one, move to close. Second.
Oh, Mr. Patel. Thank you. All right. Would you like to comment on anything, Dr. Toback?
Okay. So I didn't catch the name of the mom from Pacnac, but the 48-hour. So that has origins during the summer. It was ultimately, we worked with all of our bargaining units to kind of make sense of how we're going to proceed with the school year. Teacher Association was very concerned about time, lead time, to be able to plan for lessons with the expectation that there would be hybrid instruction, and with the expectation that there would be, you know, there would be time for planning and to be prepared to deliver virtual instruction. So that was an agreement that was made during the summer. Certainly, we can look at that particular issue. And this is Reishman, you have some things you'd like to add.
Yes. So it actually became increasingly important that we maintain that this week, because we had so many staff members out, that we had subs covering, we had specialists covering, people who aren't tagged with the responsibility of having Google Classroom, or may not even have access to Google Classroom. It was all hands on deck to keep our schools open. So we had to make a decision between, do we take every employee we have and redeploy them to keep the doors open? Or do we close schools, because we don't have enough staff? So you may have had a teacher who was there, but there were so many situations where we were even, we had people covering every hour. We did whatever we could to make sure that we kept schools open. And so it would have been impossible this week. It's not that we can't revisit. It's just, based on what happened the past two weeks, it wouldn't have even have been possible.
So I appreciate that. I mean, I think that, um...
No, we don't, I'm sorry. Sorry. It's not a back-and-forth conversation.
Oh. So what I would recommend is, communicate with your building principal. I would communicate your concerns with the building principal. It then comes to the director of elementary education. We regroup here, and then he'll communicate back out to you.
In response to Mrs. Duane's comments, there's really no particular rationale behind, other than Executive Order 253, which requires districts to have different requirements if you are vaccinated or unvaccinated, so all teachers are required to be vaccinated or tested. That's it. And I'm not aware of any campaign that the district has pushing boosters.
Okay. Old business. New business. Board of Education comments, please? You would like to say something?
Move to close.
Second.